Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the March 2024 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and the Constitution of the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the right to life.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the March 2024 Agenda presented before us this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Board Member Erica. Second?
Jamaica.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Any discussions, additions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion to accept the March 20th, 2024 Agenda carries. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes. The minutes for the BOE meeting on March 6, 2024, Board of Education meeting, are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP Nohalani. Second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, second.
Yes.
Board Member Erica. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the March 6, 2024 Board Meeting Minutes carries. At this time, we will welcome public comments. We do have someone signed up for public comments. Before you come up, I'm going to read a little statement. Okay? "Good evening. We are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you choose to do so. The board will now welcome public comments. Each individual speaker is allotted three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so." So we would love to welcome Malia Miles. Good evening and welcome. Welcome.
You need to pick up the microphone.
I was assigned an assignment by my teacher to write a wire to the school board about what I think should change in the mission. They can release for a three to two weeks.
Oh, you're welcome.
I think this change would be good for the kids. This change would help the school by making the food good enough to eat, and the food at Central Park Middle School is bad enough to make a kid sick. And we want to make the food better and a safer environment, and this can start by having fresh food that is good for the kids and healthy. To support this proposal, I have found research that shows that kids in schools need fresh and healthy food. For example, a vast body of research shows that improved nutrition in school lunches leads to increased focus and attention, improved test scores, and better classroom behavior. Higher quality foods and scratch-cooked school meals promote learning, will nourish students, have better school attendance rates, and fewer behavioral problems, and amurigation in the classroom, and this could be very beneficial for the kids in the Schenectady School District. Again, I believe this is a good opportunity to enhance our school's environment and help make kids want to come to school by making a change in the food that they're serving. And I think this is just the start of making the school district better."
Thank you. We always love when students come to the board and share their thoughts about different topics, and one thing that's really important about this one is that with the superintendent survey, we received a whole lot of students sharing about the food quality and that they wanted healthy foods. So Malia is one of many that also shared those comments in the superintendent search. So thank you, survey. So thank you so much. Thank you. We will now begin with comments from Dr. Kodo.
Good evening, Board, staff, and members of the community. I am grateful to be sitting here today and would like to provide just a little overview in reference to my transition into the superintendency role. So I've been working with Mr. Soler for the last few weeks, meeting with our ELT team one-on-ones, and I'll be transitioning to meet with our divisions as well as our building staff, as well as building leaders for the months of both March and April, and then I'll be transitioning May and June to meet with our students, our community, as well as just members of the community as a whole. So that's the goal as I transition. You'll notice within our brief that we have every week that it's shifted a little bit. That shift is going to really highlight my timeline and the engagement that I'm going to kind of immerse myself within the community as a whole. So that's what you're going to see throughout the next few weeks, working with Karen Corona. I would like to just kind of share a couple of things that I've been kind of experiencing within this particular role as a whole. Last week, the district held a district-wide professional development. It was a great day of relationship building and learning across the district. I will tell you that I spent most of my time over at the high school, meeting with our staff as they were going through professional development, and then I made an attempt to go over to the bowling alley, and I can tell you that my bowling skills were not up to par. Many gutter balls and didn't break a hundred. But it was great to just engage with the members of our community, the members of our staff, and just building those relationships with teachers and others that were in that space. I want to share that we are launching our Shades of Sisterhood, which will be this Saturday from 12 to 2:00. Shades of Sisterhood is very similar to our MBK with the focus of working with our young ladies. The goal of SOS is to help each young woman find their voice, to find their goals and dreams, and move forward in the world with pride and self-confidence. Mentorship, leadership, networking, and community service is the anchor to that work. So if you're available this weekend from 12 to 2:00 over at the high school in the auditorium, we'll be launching those efforts for this year. This week, students in middle and high school are participating in the DEI survey within the school. This is a collaboration with Tangible Developments, similar to the survey that we did with staff last year. We will also be moving that survey to our community with our families after the April recess on April 10th, and we'll be holding focus groups, not just for our students but also for our families, and Karen will be providing an update on what that looks like as far as our engagement, not only within the school but also the community. You've probably seen, or I've seen many a post as it relates to our summer enrichment program, so we are doing recruitment within summer enrichment as a whole. That's going to take place between July 8th and August 2nd, and it's focused on grades K through 12 across all of the district at eight different locations. Registration closes on the 12th, but as of today, we have over 800 students that are registered. The district is also holding another learning-to-swim program for elementary and middle school students. It's a seven-week program, open to all swimmers, all students regardless of what level they are in reference to their ability to swim. The information is on our website, social media sites, and has been emailed to parents. I will tell you that that has exploded. We've got well over 700 students that are interested to date, so I'll be working with Kim Peela and Brian Melanson to determine how we go about providing that support. So it's a good problem to have. Yesterday, our HR department held a successful teacher recruitment fair at 5:30 Liberty. Over 30 candidates were interviewed in English, Social Studies, Business, Science, Elementary Education, and Special Education. It was a tremendous turnout, and we've got some individuals that we are looking to, I think we've already made some offers in bringing them on board. I think the partnership that we have with Clarkson has been a very strong partnership as well. Just a reminder to our families, we'll be closed on Monday, March 25th, in observance of Fagwa Holi, which was added to our calendar as a holiday for the first time last year. Speaking of our calendar, the board will consider approval of the 24-25 calendar as part of tonight's agenda. Please note that in addition to Fagwa and Holi, Eid has been added as an observed holiday next year. This is all part of our efforts to be responsive and inclusive of all in our school community. Another reminder, spring recess is coming up in just over a week. It begins next Friday with Good Friday and runs through the first week of April. The board will be considering a resolution this evening for the district to be closed on April 8th due to the solar eclipse. This means the district will be closed and would extend the April recess one additional day. We have not used any snow days this year, so it would be one of an emergency closing or a snow day. Want to congratulate Yates Elementary School, who last week was named Social and Emotional Learning Superpower Video Winners in the Committee of Children's Video Contest. The Committee of Children invited families, educators, and communities to join their efforts in championing the skills kids need to thrive. A competition was held to create a video describing your SCL superpowers, focusing on relationship skills, responsibility in decision-making, self-awareness, self-management, and also social awareness. As the champions, Yates won a registration to Castle's 2024 Exchange Conference, which is the nation's largest conference on social and emotional learning. Last thing I'd like to share, as well as, as you will see later in the agenda, the board will be considering the appointment of a deputy superintendent. This will be my first hire as the incoming superintendent, and I'm excited to elevate a member of our ELT, who is homegrown, former student, teacher, building, and district leader, who is committed to our students, staff, and community. I'd like to turn it over to Board President.
Thank you, Dr. Kodo. And we will continue with board members and comments, so we'll start with Board Member Jamaica.
Hey, y'all, because that's what I say every time. Also, it is customary for me to acknowledge anyone who comes up and speaks. As I have said in the past, it is not an easy thing to stand in front of mostly strangers and to share your thoughts, and I appreciate every single time anyone comes up to speak on any issue. The same is true tonight. No bias. With that said, I also want to add Ramadan Karim to those who observe during this month of Ramadan. It is exciting to see that we'll add something to the calendar for next year. Spring sports have begun. That includes track. Students are excited. At least that one. And last but not least, I had the distinct honor earlier today to be on a panel at Albany Law School. The Task Force on Racism, Social Equity, and the Law had released in January its report and recommendations of the New York State Bar Association. It highlighted not just the historical racism that we face, the systems and structures, but made recommendations about how to change it and based it in the law, right? Laws and policies. We highlighted housing, healthcare, and of course, I was on the education panel. I was proud to be able to lift up again the voices of Schenectady as we have long been a leader in the fight for education, and to sit along some brilliant individuals and talk about how we can continue to move forward with change and making sure that Schenectady is never lost in the sauce and that we are always remembered for the work that we've done and the work we continue to do. And as a policy committee member, hearing the information on the recommendations, I do have the link for the online version, so I will share it with everyone. It is a lot of pages, but you know, have at it, read the whole thing, but it does have a wealth of information that talks about how do we continue to move forward in an equitable way and ensure that all students get the education that they receive, and since that's something we do anyways, I'm sure that we welcome additional information. And that's all my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, and Board Member Kathy.
I have a couple of shout-outs I'd like to make. One is to the PTO and the faculty and the students of Howe Elementary School for their STEM Day. It was February 29th, STEM evening, I guess you would say, and it was very interesting. They had collaboration too with a number of partners. I saw a number of union students there and other organizations that supported these STEM activities for students. I also would like to give a shout-out to the cast, backstage crew, staff, et cetera, of the production of Emma that was done at the high school from, I believe, March 6th to 8th or something like that, and wish them well in their competition, the competition that they're part of for the Proctors High School Musical Awards. And so that was exciting to see. I think I counted about 30 students that were onstage related to that. So those are my two shout-outs tonight.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. Board Member Erica?
No comment.
Board Member or Vice President Nohalani?
No public comment.
And I do have several, but I will pause and wait until the very end. So at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Russo, and he will be sharing a recognition to our safety officers.
Thank you, Board President Rivera. Thank you, Dr. Kodo, for allowing me to be here. Want to start by thanking the entire Board of Education and the superintendent for allowing me to recognize tonight two safety team members. I would like to call two safety team members to the front right now. Security Monitor Louis Silva and School Safety Officer John Searls, if you could join me up here. There's always a pleasure to recognize individuals that go above and beyond for the students and families that we serve. Tonight, with the support of Principal Tony Farina and Senior School Safety Officer Joe Pagano, I am expressing my appreciation for actions that were taken last month when a potentially dangerous situation occurred at one of our middle schools. While I will not discuss the specifics of the situation, I can attest to the fact that the actions taken by these two individuals prevented a dangerous situation from escalating. With little regard for their own safety, Security Monitor Louis Silva and School Safety Officer John Searls took immediate decisive action that prevented anyone from being injured or harmed. Their actions on this particular day reflected the highest standard of service and fully demonstrated the values of the Office of School Climate and Safety. While they both would tell you they were just doing their jobs, any reasonable person would recognize that their actions and bravery prevented a bad situation from getting worse. On behalf of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the entire Schenectady City School District, we extend our deepest gratitude to you both. It is an honor to have you on our safety team. Thank you.
We thank you so much for your bravery and for being there for our students, our staff. We really very much appreciate it, and we know that you went the extra mile for us, and we will never forget that. So thank you. And I do want to read a statement from Board Member Vivian, who unfortunately is not here today. "To both Louis and John, I wanted to say thank you," when I say that, she has it in big caps, "thank you to both of you for setting aside your own personal need for safety in order to make sure our children were safe and unharmed. Your dedication is nothing short of extraordinary. You are a glowing example of what all of our students need and deserve. But I also wanted to specifically address Pastor Louis Silva. I deeply regret my absence this evening, but I could not let the evening pass without making sure that you and the rest of the district heard this from me." And this is Vivian Parsons, our board member. "I still remember the days you walked the halls of Schenectady High School as a security guard more than 20 years ago." You look good. To so many, she didn't write that. "To so many students, along with myself, you were a friend, a source of safety, a confident, confidant, and even, in some cases, a father figure. You had a tremendous impact on me as a student over 20 years ago, and my heart is full knowing that you are impacting a new generation of students in the same way today. We, as a school district, are blessed to have you." And again, this is from Board Member Vivian Parsons. Have blessed. And we are going to celebrate some more. We're going to have former Board Member Junior Hatlal, and he's also a community activist who's going to introduce our great Schenectady High School students.
Good evening, Superintendent Kodo, Board President Rivera, Board members. We have a special performance for you this evening as the Schenectady Hindu community celebrates Holi. Suraj Singh, a 10th grader at the high school, is going to say the significance briefly to everyone here, and also we have a dance performance by Roshni Mangru afterwards.
Thank you. Welcome, Suraj.
Thank you. Good evening. Namaste.
Namaste.
My name is Suraj Singh, and I'm a 10th grader at Schenectady High School, and I'm also an active member at the Schenectady Hindu Temple. This evening, it is an honor to present the significance of Holi or Fagwa to this Board of Education. On the night of Holi, which is always on a full moon night, in the month of March, Holi Kadhaan, a big fire is burned. This signifies the eradication of our negativity, burning all our evil power and bad energy and re-energizing ourselves. The next day, Holi is celebrated. Holi or Fagwa is a festival celebrated over thousands of years by Hindus across the world. It originates from India and spreads to the Caribbean and United States by our East Indian ancestors. This festival is very inclusive, as one of the main themes of the festival is unity. Holi brings the community, family, friends, neighbors, and now, including teachers and district staff, together and invites them to throw away their inhibitions and unite in one big colorful group. This celebration, we must forget any feeling of hardship that may be present. We must not differentiate between rich or poor. Everyone celebrates together with the spirit of brotherhood. So while the Holi festival is rooted in Hindu tradition, it is celebrated, it's a celebration that happens all over the world. This festive day is to end and rid oneself of past errors and to end conflicts by meeting others, a day to forgive and forget by applying colored powders, red, green, orange, and my personal favorite, purple, to smear at loving friends and family. As each color provides festival gores with a sense of beauty, ritual, and traditions, these colors are made with herbs and sweet-smelling flowers. These delicious vegetarian foods is cooked and served. Lots of sweetmeats are shared among family and friends. Chautals and Fagwa songs are sung and danced. As I repeat, we smear color on each other, we sing chautals, dance, and serve sweetmeats to friends and family. As you see, Holi helps revitalize relationships and strengthen emotional bonds between people. Holi ai, holi ai, deke holi ai. Everyone should love to be part of such a colorful and joyous celebration. Don't hold back yourself, enjoy the festival, and participate with full enthusiasm in this tradition. I would personally like to say thank you to this education board for recognizing Holi as a public holiday. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Ask her to come in for a minute. If she wants to, she can come in for a minute just so we can say thank you. We want to thank you so much because once again, it is very like, ooh, to be in front of us and in front of everyone, but you did a beautiful job. And this is why we're here, for you all, for the students, so that you can show us the things that you do and how wonderful you are. So thank you so much, and thank you so much, okay, for sharing what Holi is all about so that we have a clear understanding of the holiday that now everyone can enjoy in our school district because it's a holiday off for everyone. So thank you so much. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hatlal, as well. Thank you. Okay, so I will pause for a minute if folks, because we're going to get into like the deep, like the policy stuff and presentation. So if anyone would like to leave at this moment, you can. And we won't take offense to it at all, okay? So congratulations again for the recognition. We appreciate you. And have a good night, families, also for being here. We appreciate all of you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will continue on with our policy, the first policy reading. And Vice President Nohalani, who's also Chair of the Policy Committee, will introduce the policy.
So, good evening. The Policy Committee has taken a look at Policy 8272, which is in reference to a new policy that we're looking to enact around Chromebook policies. So Board Member Jamaica, Board Member Vivian and I, we've gone through this policy in depth. And so we're bringing it tonight for our first read and wanted to open this up to anyone to see if there were any questions in reference to this particular policy.
I do, Vice President Nohalani, I do have a question. And I believe it's in regards to 1.2, Chromebook Damage and Replacement. My question, if you take a look at the second paragraph there, it talks about if a student fails to return a home loan Chromebook at the end of the school year upon termination of enrollment at Schenectady City Schools, the student will pay the Chromebook and/or accessory replacement. What I was wondering, let's say that the student does not pay for the Chromebook. Would they be issued or given a Chromebook the following year, even without making the payment?
So I believe we have some information in here. Board Member Jamaica, help me if I'm off because it's been a little while. We don't want to penalize the students for not paying the fee. We want to, in essence, teach and, you know, get the families to understand. So they will be signing kind of like a waiver, saying that they received the information, that they're gonna go through this, that they understand what the fees are associated with it. I think what we've seen in the past was that there were some Chromebooks. There were certain, it was happening where students were getting a Chromebook, getting another, a third, a fourth. And those are the kind of things that we want to curb. So we are looking to enact this. And we did talk a little bit about that, like what would happen if they hadn't. I don't believe that we agreed upon it. I'm going to double check with Superintendent Dr. Kodo. And I know Joe is also Chair in regards. Do you guys recall the specifics?
One of the things I remember is us talking about, this is another moment where implementation matters, relationships matter, being able to communicate with families and working with them if necessary, right? But we do have a lot of Chromebooks. And each student needs to be able to have access to them. So how is it that we can be responsible and also share that responsibility with students and families and have that accountability? But it isn't written as if you'll never get another one. It, again, is a policy that allows us to be responsible and implement it in a way that is really about building that relationship unless I got it wrong.
And that actually, I think, did come back to me. I believe where we landed was the administrators, right? It would, it would possibly be escalated and it would be a case-by-case basis.
See, I think it's the due process, but the relationship is important. And from the classroom teacher to the administration, I mean, there's many factors that kind of impact why a child may have either lost the Chromebook. So it's really digging deep and kind of understanding the challenges or the obstacles that that child may have and then also making sure that we're working with family to support. But if Joe and Kathy...
And the idea was, the policy serves as an anchor, but to sort of trigger these conversations. And then the Policy Committee will exist to be informed from feedback, to adjust the policy as needed through the committee, through future reads, to see what practice looks like and then what we get back. And we will, we will work through, from district to building, to those and recipient of each Chromebook, to have conversations and get more information around the why beyond the what.
I was just gonna point out too that the conversation was had about the accountability piece and that the, it was a discussion between the student, the parent, and the administrator, and there was discretion. But the, truly what we're trying to do, as you mentioned, is to deal with the students that, I mean, I was checking today. I've seen several students that have had four or five already this year. So this policy will also help us anchor a process within our student information system where we can better track how many, which students have had multiple devices and certain types of damage and things like that.
And I have a follow-up question before Board Member Kathy asks. Years ago, we used to have a cart that the Chromebooks were in. And I'm mentioning this too because in the surveys, the superintendent surveys, there were some concerns, not a lot, a lot, but there were some concerns about the Chromebooks and laptops from students and from staff. So I'm wondering if we have entertained using those, you know, those carts again because that way the teachers have it, the students can still check it out, you know. I see you smiling.
You're giving me the right props. So that discussion has also been had. And it was based on some analytics that we've done with the use of Chromebooks. First of all, we found that very few of them were being used off hours over the weekends or at night. And then we kind of played that against how much damage occurs when the students take them to and from school. And probably even one of the bigger issues of the students not bringing them to school so the teachers can't plan on having them in class because the kids aren't necessarily bringing them. So for that reason, we have decided that we're, 612, we're gonna model what we've been doing in K-12 the last few years where all of the Chromebooks, I'll say "all" in air quotes, are gonna stay in the buildings in carts. In fact, we just took a delivery of carts a few days ago where we're starting to build that out for the middle schools. But they'll stay in the buildings with exceptions for students, you know, especially students at Center City and both these programs where they may need to have their devices going home and available off school grounds.
There's an opt-in option.
Yes.
Thank you. And Board Member Kathy?
How much does a Chromebook cost?
Getting quotes right now. The Chromebook itself is about $290, the model that we've been purchasing. There's another $25, or I'm sorry, $33 license that goes along with each one that allows us to manage it. And then we can opt for other options for like what they call Depot, which allows us to be able to send them back without mailing charges for warranty repairs and things like that. But factor around $325 apiece.
And the question, part of the reason I asked the question, I mean, the fees are low and I understand that they're not intended to be for replacement costs and this kind of thing. But are these Chromebooks the ones that it will be anticipated would be used for testing as we move more into the full testing mode? So we need 10,000 of these things, right?
Yeah, we have at least.
I know, we had to get on a faster basis than we had thought, yeah.
Yeah, in fact, the shipment of carts that we took in the other day are currently being filled with the devices in preparation for computer-based testing. Because I want, that's another challenge that we have is making sure they're here for computer-based testing and charged and ready to go. With having those in the carts now, they'll be there every day. They'll be charged when they pick them up in the morning.
And I also would share that we've piloted through the DEI survey that we're doing now with our middle and high school students, the Chrome carts that are in the middle and high.
I do have one other question. And this is, and I wonder as well. This is on the Chromebook loan agreement. It says, "Students may be selected at random to provide their Chromebook for inspection." I'm just wondering...
I don't recall that passage, but I would have... One of the problems that we run into is that students often break their Chromebook or they've got missing keys or something like that. They don't report it. And then we have an event like computer-based testing and then all of a sudden we get flooded with tickets because they need that device and they've just been kind of holding on to it because they, they didn't want to let it be known about the damage.
Thank you.
Does it mention testing in this? I didn't remember seeing that in here.
I don't think so.
No, it doesn't.
Maybe we should add a clause that says that it's needed specifically for testing.
They'll be, they'll be in the schools for that, yeah, for that purpose.
Will that begin in September where the teachers will have the Chromebook carts?
They actually, my anticipation is that in the middle schools, they'll just continue using the carts through the balance of this year. And then they'll have them for the fall, yes. The high school, we're waiting on the carts until later in the year.
Another question. So it wouldn't be each individual teacher? Would it be on a certain wing that they'll have a cart?
Those details are being worked out. This, the cart, the cart model creates or presents several challenges. But the buildings are committed to working through it, yes. The idea is that a student will have a one-to-one Chromebook assigned to them that stays in the same cart every night. And they'll use the same device every day.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And we have two policies for adoption. The Meal Modification Plan Policy, which is 5663, and Policy 7680, Independent Educational Evaluation Policy. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Any discussions, questions?
Is the cost, which seems to be the only change in this, has that been determined to be reasonable to move it up to $4,000? I mean, we know that based on access to independent evaluators.
It's about cost increase.
Yeah, to address inflation cost increase, yeah. And we worked with Andrew Toll Freeman, Student Support Services.
So they, so we know that that's a good number there, relatively speaking, okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to adopt Policy 5663 and Policy 7680. The next order of business are the Consent Agenda items. The Consent Agenda includes items that are approved by consent and were previously sent to the Board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the Consent Agenda by a single member if they wish to do so. Before I ask if anyone wants to remove it, we will have the walk-ons after, okay? Would anyone like any other cons, or any Consent Agenda item removed?
The calendar. The calendar.
The calendar?
Yeah.
Okay. So we will be removing Consent Agenda Item 8, and we will discuss and vote on it after we approve the Consent Agenda items. So Resolutions 8 through 11G, with the exception, should I say, Resolutions numbers 9 through 11G, with the exception of the walk-ins, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes, as itemized on the Consent Agenda are presented for approval, I'll accept the motion to approve these items. May I have a motion? Thank you, Board Member Kathy, second.
Jamaica.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept Resolutions 9 through 11G carries. So now we will return back to Agenda Item 8.
So I feel, it's this one, yes? Okay, great. I think that it's important for us to, for this to be separate because we have been so intentional about being fully representative and inclusive, not just in our practices and policies, but like this calendar is another example of our commitment to every single student that is represented inside this district. And I want to applaud those efforts that have happened over years and our commitment to continue that going forward. I know that it can be hard to think about school not ending on June 21st because Roman's birthday used to be the end of school. But this allows for us to really be inclusive and ensure that our students have that, that full support. So that really was the reason that I wanted to pull it so it had that full attention.
And thank you because I do have something to say about it as well. And a lot of what you said, I have, I've said. But I would like to highlight two items, but then the second item, stay tuned. First is number eight. The 2024-25 School Calendar. Eid is now observed as a holiday in Schenectady City School District. We're one of the few. So that's a huge deal. I do want to thank the students throughout the years who have advocated for this holiday and have highlighted the importance of this religious observance for our Muslim students. And we've had students come to the Board meetings. And I've been on the Board for now seven years, I think. Throughout the seven years, we've had students come to the Board and advocate. And this year, I do want to just highlight two, or two or three. I would like to thank Hasna Said, Hayel Hussain, and Mohammed Hussain, who also came to the Board and advocated for Eid. And once again, just like the superintendent's search and a lot of the decisions the Board has made in the last several months, we're listening, we're listening, okay? And we thank you. And again, this has been something that's been ongoing, as Jamaica had mentioned. Board Member Jamaica, we have been advocating for this for a long time. But it's great to see under the leadership also of Superintendent Suleed, who supported having Eid. And the Board, who has made this come to fruition soon, maybe, with our vote tonight. So with that being said, may I have a motion to accept Consent Agenda 8, the adoption of the 2024-25 School Year Calendar? May I have a motion? Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, and thank you, Vice President Nohalani. And I think we can have a hand for that. we can have a hand for that.
Yeah, we did, all in favor.
Oh, oh, yeah, thank you. And.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Any opposed? The motion carries to adopt the 2024-2025 School Year Calendar. Sorry, I jumped the gun. Now we can clap. All right. And consent agenda item 10F. We want, oh, 10F. So may I have a motion to approve, and we actually did.
Yes, we did.
So now we're going to say congratulations. So congratulations, Dr. Joe DiCaprio, for being our Deputy Superintendent.
Yeah, Joe, if you'd like to say a few words.
Joe always talks.
I thought. Good evening, Board President Rivera, Dr. Coto, our incredible Board of Education, Michelle Eden. I stand before you with great pride, humility, and honor to accept this appointment. I have to say that there are people in this room that I have to thank, and I just want to make sure everyone hears it. Being a son of Schenectady as I was referred to in the Gazette a few articles ago, but it's the truth. My parents, Linda DiCaprio, Mont Pleasant graduates, they are Schenectady. And I was blessed to be raised by these two individuals that prioritized not just what you do in life, but where you do it. And so thank you, Mom and Dad, for showing me the way and loving me with every ounce of your heart and soul. It's paid off. Thank you. Thank you to Erin Anne Louise, my in-laws in Syracuse, New York. I know they're watching on live stream, but they've, they've loved me like a son. There's been no in-law, and I'm blessed and grateful for that. And then my children, Jake and Will are here. Boys, make me proud every day. Get your homework done. But keep, keep being the great human beings you are. I'm very proud of you every day. My daughter's at O'Niana right now. I want to make sure I say hi to her. Gracie, I know you're not here, but I know you're here in spirit. Keep doing great things out there. And above all else, I, she is here. She, I knew you'd show up. Just a woman who lights up every room she walks in. And I'm just blessed to be in the same room as she is, because she said yes 22 years ago. And I, I can't tell you, I was half a man before I met her, and she makes me a better man every day. And I'm just so grateful for her influence and impression on my life, my wife, Lori. Thank you, Lori. I love you. Thanks for sticking with me. Lastly, to all of you, please know, I accept this position with an energy, a passion, and a commitment to this place, but above all else, our children and our families. I am one of them. Elmer Avenue School, O'Nita Middle School, Schenectady High School. I've only lived to serve this place because I want to replicate how it made me feel, what it's done to me as a child, as a student, and now as a professional. And my mission is like, in life, in this life, in this profession, is to go nowhere else but to continue to uplift our kids. They're amazing. We are resilient, we are strong, and we will rise. And with this title, I promise you and honor you with every ounce of my heart and soul, I will give you my best to get our best to where they deserve to be. Thank you. I accept with great humility. Thank you.
And I do want to mention that, and I mentioned this at one of the board meetings about two board meetings ago, during the time that we were doing the superintendent search, we had the superintendent search survey. And we had 641 people complete it, but we also had many, 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 many emails from, many emails and letters with community members saying several things. And I mentioned this, but I think it's important to, to share this, that they wanted an internal candidate. They wanted someone, internal candidate, and then separately, someone who loves and knows Schenectady, someone who is about Schenectady, someone who's passionate about Schenectady. I mean, all the Schenectadies, right? And what we, as we were going through the process, we, we, when we're looking at the surveys and we were looking at what our community wanted and needed, and what we know the community wanted and needed, we were very, very happy to have Dr. Coto, but also to have you, Joe, because you complement and you really align with what so many people said in our surveys. And again, this is a testament to the board really listening to our community and making sure that we give the community what they want, but we also know is what's right for the community, right? Because we're not always going to do everything the way the community wants. We know that as well. But we knew this was the right decision. Seen you through Paige as a principal, and through your journey. So congratulations from all of us. Congratulations. And congratulations, parents. So we do have two walk-on resolutions tonight. I make a motion to waive the 48-hour rule for the walk-on resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. Second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Board Member Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to waive the 48-hour rule for two walk-on resolutions. I present to you a motion to amend the agenda and add the following item or information, a resolution to sell a portion of the 2310 Gilderlin Avenue property as a result of new findings related to the capital project. May I have a motion?
Do we have these motions?
We're going to talk about it, actually.
Okay, I'll move it.
Okay.
So we can discuss it.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President. And then we'll take a minute for, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take a minute to discuss the.
We come up just to share how we got to this point.
I don't have a copy. We don't have a copy.
You have questions or?
Well, I don't have a copy.
Yeah, well, Terry's gonna, Terry will talk about it.
So what happened?
When we, as you know, during the capital project, we had to do a survey of all the property that we plan on working on. And Van Corleere is one of the first buildings. Our architects are here. When they did the survey of Van Corleere, the back on the Gilderlin Avenue piece, a portion of our property, a house was built in 1925 around there, where like 100 square feet of the house were left, is on the district's property. So.
So he didn't want to chop off part of the house?
Exactly. So, and they just rehabbed the whole house. And this is kind of like when we did like a title search when we went to sell Elmer, not knowing it wasn't in our possession. So it's been going around for, you know, almost 100 years where this property line crosses, our property line crosses through like their back kitchen. So we wanted to maybe set up a table, but we thought it'd be best for both the district and.
Every week or so.
So we thought it was best for both the district and the homeowner to have a settlement of $1,000. Chris Honeywell, our lawyer, worked on that. And he basically said the assessed value of property in Schenectady is like a dollar point three one square foot for a total value of $377. But we had some legal fees involved. So we thought $1,000 would be fair for the property owner to pay to sell that. Now, this does need public approval at the May vote, because anytime you sell any school district property, wish they're willing to sign a contract now contingent that the property passes as being sold at the May 2024 budget vote.
So another ballot initiative?
It'll be a proposition on the ballot, but we really have no use. We developed our plans for Van Corleere and extended the parking lot up to the point where there's only going to be about six feet from the parking lot to their, their property. So that's probably the best outcome for everybody at this moment.
Okay, so we're, we're selling ours, selling our property to them for $1,000, basically?
Yeah.
And that's the, that's what the motion will be on the, on the ballot?
Yep, exactly.
That's what we're doing, okay.
Thank you.
So again, a resolution to sell a portion of the 2310.
Should we really vote this after we have heard about it? I think we voted it before.
Well, I'm going to have officially vote on it now that you have heard it.
No, I mean, we had done the motion and then.
Yeah, so.
The $48 that we voted on?
Yeah, we voted it.
It was a 48 hour, too.
So I'm just going to do it one more time, just so we can make sure. A resolution to sell a portion of the 2310 Gilderlin Avenue property as a result of new findings related to the capital project. Again, may I have a motion for the vote?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. And was that Kathy?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to sell a portion of the 2310 Gilderlin Ave land. So we have a second walk-on resolution, but before we vote on it, this is the preliminary smart schools investment plan. If we can have someone just share a little bit of information about that.
Actually, excuse me, there's, there's a few slides that's going to follow Terry's presentation.
Okay.
That outlines the, the plan itself. The resolution is basically the board saying that it's okay to submit for an application for the smart schools, which we've already, and I'll explain more, we've already submitted two applications and done two projects. This is to use remaining funds.
Okay. Any questions, Board Members?
So we will have used the entire 9.3 million or whatever it is after this particular action?
Yeah, that, that's the plan, yes.
Because this has been kicking around for how many years now?
Since 2014 is when smart schools were approved.
I was going to say, it's been a while, so 10 years, huh?
Yep.
And, and so there is no more smart money after this for, unless they enact something.
Unless we don't, I mean, the, the amounts that we're looking to apply for are, they're, they're estimates in a lot of cases for how much it's going to cost to do the work. For instance, the, the two projects that we've already done, we came in way under what we submitted for. So we're carrying a lot of that balance into these projects. So.
What were the two projects that we've previously done? How was this segmented?
I, I'll, I was going to speak to that.
You're going to do that later?
Yeah, but essentially, we did connectivity, which we replaced all the switches and the wireless access points in the district. And then we also purchased a lot of classroom technology in Chromebooks. It was kind of a, an emergency purchase due to COVID.
Yeah, when we did it COVID, okay.
Yep.
So what's our order here? Are we?
This, the, the resolution is basically just allowing, saying that it's okay for us, once we have approval, there's a 30-day waiting period or comment period for the smart schools investment plan. So after tonight, we'll have 30 days, but this resolution allows us to submit that application to the state.
I always want you to go get money.
Yes.
So we're discussing what we're submitting it for and when?
After Terry's presentation.
Oh, okay. So we're going to discuss that later?
Tonight, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, this is just for them to apply. Of course, if we have questions or comments about what it's for.
This is not committing us to anything. And even, even once we, once we get our programs approved, we're still not committed to anything. We can alter applications, we can do lots of different things.
This is us just giving you permission to ask for the money.
And they can pay a long time out from now, as they have.
The state.
As the state has, yes.
So I present to you a second, a motion to amend the agenda and add the following item or information, a resolution approving preliminary smart schools investment plan. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Etienne. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to approve the preliminary smart schools investment plan. So now we will begin with our first presentation by Chief of Facilities, Brian Dangler and the team. And they will be presenting on the Schenectady Revitalization Plan. Welcome.
Thank the Board of Education and everyone for having us tonight to present to you the progress that we've made on our current capital improvement plan. Everybody's been hard at work. We have a great update tonight. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to our architects and our design team, Rich Little, as well as our construction management team, Tom Lawson, and Alastair Higginson.
As always, thank you very much for having us here tonight. This is a continuation of the updates that we're going to continue to bring you as we, as we touch on milestones. You've seen a lot of information already. Today, we're going to be sharing with you some new information. A lot of it is renderings and slides that we're going to talk about of, of things that are, are being worked on right now. Tom is going to touch point on some of the construction that's ongoing. We're going to talk about the process a little bit and keep, we're going to continue to keep doing these things, so feel free to ask questions. But our goal today is to share with you what's going on and what's coming up.
Thank you.
We're going to touch base on the, the program, early phase projects, revitalization, district-wide developments, and other project updates. Yeah. We're going to talk about some, some improvements that his team's been doing that are very important to steps that the district's taking to move us forward.
Good evening. So this is our schedule for the entire Schenectady revitalization plan 2030. I won't belabor too much of it, but the, the large kind of like blocks of color are representative of each kind of like building that we're attacking, or, well, say attacking, sorry, that we're working on. The first one up actually is Fulton, which Brian and his team have been working to, to create that swing space, which is the valuable kind of key, kind of like key component of this entire project. We'll be moving into talking about the, the projects are going to be up to bid shortly, but this is just a, a kind of comprehensive overview of the next, as you can see, the next five and a half to, to six years. I'm going to click forward. Sure. I'll see if the pointer picks up on the screen.
So, I don't know if you can see this right here where the pointer is, but really, that's where we are. We haven't even begun this. So real, just, just to give you a quick context, and I'm just going to take a minute on this. I wanted to point out, because I was doing some big picture things, because that's kind of what a program manager does. So I wanted to put this in context. So to date, I thought the board would be interested in the public that we've completed $5 million worth of work, and that's construction cost, okay? We're not talking about any soft costs or incidentals to date. That's in the first nine months. We had to launch the whole program and get it going, you know, upstart takes a little while. I thought it'd be interesting to, to share with you that over the next five months, we expect to complete another $8 million, okay? So we go five and nine to eight million in five months, and then 37 million for the remaining 14 months. So very quickly, by the end of, let's say, August, September of 2025, we'll be at the 50 million mark, just in hard cost, not soft cost or incidental. So I just kind of, kind of wanted to put that out there so you can see the, the steep ramp, if you will, of where this is going.
So yes, the first part up here is we're talking about the completed projects. I'll touch on a little bit of the, the two emergency projects that we've since completed, and then I'll pass over to Tom to talk about the active ones right now. We, as you remember, there was the, the issue with the crawl space over at Page. That has since been addressed. There's now a encapsulated floor down there. It's been fully abated, so it is now safe for all kind of maintenance staff to go down there. We also, if you recall, there was issues with masonry falling from the parapet walls at Hamilton into the courtyard and also down into sidewalk. That has also been remedied. We did some additional work over there that, once we were up on the roof, we discovered that there was further work that really needed to be addressed. And since there was scaffolding on site, we took advantage of that and, and made it safe.
Yeah, we're, excuse me, we're proud of those completed projects that was part of the mountain, kind of getting us out of the, out of the starting gate, if you will. I do have to point out Dr. Hussin back here with Jacobs as well. If you could stand up, thank you. He, he's been our boots-on-the-ground guy, making sure all these projects get launched properly and proper protocol, safety, things like that, all gets in place. So, so we're always ever-present. So, we're always ever-present as well on site as you would imagine. Yes, over here at Schenectady High School, I think all of you are familiar with this, maybe not in the macro, but the blue courts there that you're seeing on the right-hand side and the green around it, those are the new six tennis courts, and I believe there's three pickleball. So, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, because that was a big ask, I think. And an expanded parking lot area here, just to kind of stick some bricks here, but not much to the naked eye, if you will. But really, what this is, is it's gonna be the viewing area for bleachers of the courts. And in the next slide, you'll see the courts roughed in right now, basically, with the perimeter fence poles all up around it, the new Musco lighting, there's six Musco lighting poles, and then this will get the surfacing and things like that. You'll see that progressing, actually, if you can go back one slide. There was one thing that I'm glad Alastair included this. If you see the banner along the bottom there, that actually represents one of the elevations on the parking lot side. So, every time you drive into the high school now, the idea is you get, you get a kind of a logoed kind of screen, if you will, windscreen, that will have these graphics on it facing the parking lot in the high school. So, it'll be some good branding for the district and really kind of make a nice backdrop there. Also, when you're playing tennis, it's kind of nice not to look at cars. So, anyway, or pickle. Moving on to Mount Pleasant, I think you're familiar with this. Everyone's been driving by this. I think you're gonna see a lot of work happening now. We're kind of out of the winter, kind of, not that it was much of a winter, but it still has frozen ground and things like that. We couldn't really progress some of the work with.
They look pretty cold out there today.
Yeah, it's cold, but luckily, they're off and running again. The new lights are up here, the track is roughed in. You'll see gravel going across the field, which serves as a subbase, probably 14 inches for the new synthetic turf field. And after this, soon after this, you'll also see, we're out to bid right now on the concession stand, and we're actually, we're getting bids in on Tuesday. So, we're excited about that, one of our first public bids to come in. See if there's any, you can advance through this slide.
Thank you. We're gonna touch base, the next couple of slides are gonna really be focusing on the Phase 1A of the high school, and that's opening the Freshman Leadership Academy. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about those drawings, and then we're gonna follow up after that talking about Van Corleere. Phase 2, the next round that we're already working with your team on, again, I wanna take a moment and just recognize the tremendous amount of work that all of your administration, your teachers, everybody's been flexible and working with us, coming into user group meetings that we hold that bring in their input and feedback as we develop through these processes. So, thank you to all of them, and know that there's a lot of hard work that they're doing above and beyond their normal job. So, in Phase 2A, it'll be the high school, the cane development of the cane site and Mount Pleasant Kitchen. This is an aerial of the Freshman Leadership Academy building, the complex, Steinmetz. The development on here, and I wanna preface this with two fantastic things, that these projects are about to go out for bid. All right, we're finalizing things with SED, we're about to approach the bid market. So, I am showing renderings of where the project is that's gone out. Unfortunately, just like everything else in life, we have constraints that are outside of our control on cost. So, some of these things that we'll be talking about are alternates and things like that that are part of it, so that if bids come in good, we can gain some additional items. I'll try to touch base on some of them. The key reality is that, once we get these bids in, we will bring this back to you and we will show you, you know, exactly where we stand and where we fell on these items. So, in this one here, the big things are to remember that we're expanding the parking lot. And on the, on the top section, just to the left of, because this is not, it's not picking up across the graphics. Oh, there it is. It's not, it won't go across the images, I apologize. But basically, you can see the white area adjacent to the parking lot. We're expanding the parking so that we have enough to accommodate the building, the staff, and some additional parking. That will be part of this project, the parking is a must, we have to have that parking. The athletic basketball courts and tennis courts, those ones are alternates that we're hoping that we can include in this project. This is the potential entry, so the new entry will be on, adjacent to the new parking lot. So, this is, this is also unfortunately an alternate that we're proposing, but this would be signifying to everybody, this is the entrance to the school. Looking at this, and the floor plans are a little bit light, but what's most important is, this is just a graphic showing the volume of the buildings, and the blue color is showing the amount of the building that's gonna be touched. Just like anything else, we can't afford to touch every area, so there was a lot of discussions and conversations focused on touching the most-used spaces and the most-public spaces, so that we reinvent this building. This is an isometric of the new entrance, and so it's kind of a blow-up of floor plan that we've worked on with the different teams throughout the building. This, in the front, is a secure vestibule, that's followed by your main office. And then, behind that is a new nursing suite, keeping all those elements right at the front control area. And that's followed by a new large toilet rooms that are adjacent to your van areas. This slide is of the exact other side of the building where the locker rooms, some of the locker rooms used to be, and the old nurse's office used to be in this area. This will be repurposed into team locker rooms, locker rooms for the building, and also a fitness and new maintenance shop. These are images of what the science classrooms are gonna look like. We've had a lot of conversations and meetings with the administrative team at the building and the science. These rooms are significant, because they're a large scope of the work to re-renovate these spaces and create them into science. And one of the key things was that every student is gonna use these rooms. So, it was, it was important that everybody got an opportunity to be in a space, because we're not gonna be able to touch every room. So, this was, this was a way we could do something that was necessary and needed for the program in the building, but also that everyone would be able to experience. Jumping, any questions on freshman leadership?
What street is the front entrance on? Is that Oak?
Oak, yeah.
It's the same one.
Same where it is.
It's the same street.
One right out of here, okay.
Correct.
Yes, I did have questions. You shouldn't have asked.
I know.
It's gonna be quick, I promise. Can you talk about the bid process and what outreach looks like?
Yeah, we've contacted over 98, excuse me, we've reached out to over 98 companies overall. So, and we have, feel very good about that, and we have very, there's a lot of interest out there. We've probably got, we're probably 12-deep in each discipline, so general contractors, mechanical, plumbing, electrical. And then, we're also doing a food service portion as well. So, we've got, under the general contractor, we, general trades contractor, there's abatement and site work and things like that, so, yeah.
Are any of them local to Schenectady?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Most all of them.
Thank you. I do have a quick question. The slide that's titled Phase 1A Freshman Leadership Academy, Steinmetz Campus, proposed bid date, and you have the ground floor, first floor, second floor, third floor. Oh, okay, okay. Quick question, because this has come up throughout the years, actually. When the renovation is going to be done, is that also going to touch on the bathrooms, the lockers, the water fountains as well?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Every bathroom will be touched.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
The drinking fountains and the quarters will be replaced.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Will that solve our lead problem?
It comes into your building, I don't know, but it will sort of, once it's in.
Because we have city pipes that probably are potentially a problem for the drinking water, right?
I mean, we have testing every, so often, so, I mean.
I know.
And they keep, they keep lowering the, or. Correct, correct. So, what we're also doing is that each one of the new fountains have built-in internal filters.
Okay.
So, that, those will be point locations that resolve that, because we're seeing this across the entire state. I was actually just at a facilities meeting, statewide facilities, where Brian's counterparts, a number of them were there, expressing the same concern. They've spiraled through and kept ratcheting down each year.
How many parts per billion?
Correct. And at some point, we're gonna get to a level that the source where we're being fed is gonna have the problem, and how are we gonna deal with it inside? There's a lot of work going into that, and, you know, these filtered systems have now caught up, and, you know, we're gonna be implementing them across the building. Anything else on freshmen?
It's last one. It's gonna be an unpleasant one, so heads up. In the event that the freshman academy fails, and we're like, hey, you know what? Our kids are transitioning too much from middle school to one building, and then transitioning again to the high school, and we find that, you know, we tried this, because we're always going to pay attention to how things are working. When it fail, if it fails, what, like, accessibility for repurposing the building?
So that.
Like, does this allow for us to, you know, it's basically an upgrade to the building overall?
Correct.
We'll be able to use it for, you know, just teaching period.
Correct, they're all interchangeable classrooms. The science labs are built in a standard that they can be used at any high school level, so this building, this building could facilitate even, without a problem in middle schools. Obviously, you could put elementary in the building, because the class sizes are adequate. There'd be some adjustments needed and necessary to put that. But basically, from a, from a middle school and high school level, it's interchangeable. Yep. I mean, the labs that we're building, the science labs, are completely flexible spaces. They're not built as a traditional, you know, I think if you walk through some of our science labs today in this district, a lot of them are peninsulas and physical barriers that force a classroom to be utilized in a certain way. All of these science rooms that we're talking about are built with flexible mobile workstations that can be pushed up against the perimeter where your sinks and facilities are, so that they can be used for lab, but then moved around, create large space, whatever, it creates a lot of flexibility, so completely interchangeable. This is the Van Corleere site. On the left-hand side, you see the shape there for the additional parking lot that would be placed in. There's a number of other features on the site that came out of some conversations with the building level in regards to controls, parent drop-off, driveways. So, there's some things being implemented into the plans that, in control, physical controls and barriers to make sure people are entering and exiting in a safe manner. We're taking away choice. Again, this is the overlay of the floor levels, and you'll see that there is work on each floor, small on your upper floors. Main focus is our lower level, recreating that space and organizing. And it's really, going back to past presentations, the focus here was creating a large community STEM room and then bringing our student services, our student cafeteria out to the outside where students have windows, and bringing that up to state-of-the-art facility for the cafeteria and students. I'm showing, what we're showing here is the proposed elevation of the face of the building. So, there's some slight different variations just on some color finishes. If you, if you look below the bluestone canopy, you can see the glass entryway, and we're looking at a couple of different options on what there. This option, unfortunately, that is an element that we could take away if we had to and wouldn't affect with our daily operations, we would miss it. But this, it is an alternate, so this is how that building and our entrance would look should we have to, should we not be able to build that canopy in this round. I guess I'd be remiss in just reminding everybody that each one of these buildings are limited by how much we can spend by a maximum cost allowance. And so, that's our, that's our judge, we have to stay within that every five years. So, all the work that we're doing is projecting more work than what we're showing and even have in these bid documents, because we projected a master plan of where these buildings need to go. So, the work that we're doing now is just kind of a setup of the work we would do in the future. This is a view on the end by the current parent parking lot, and the only parking lot, looking back towards that entrance, the bus loop would be on your left-hand side, and you can see a view with the canopy and then also without. There will be a slope ramp down and stairs to get you down. There is a slight change in elevation to get down to this location, but this will put our, our main office for this building on this corner with direct visual out of parent drop-off, busing, all of those things.
That gets you at grade in a secure vestibule, at this building, versus going up 20 stairs to get to.
Is there a ramp on the right side of that, the steps, I can't quite tell?
Well, what. One side is a ramp, so if you were looking at the new entrance coming down, as one is a, one is a ramp, and on the other side, it's a stair coming down. This is a rendering of what the cafeteria could look like. This is what we're proposing, there's a lot of light and windows on the left. We're taking advantage of the existing architecture of that building. It has some very unique window structures and openings throughout that level, so we'll separate it from the cafeteria. This image here is a rendering of what the STEM room or the community space would look like. You can see there's kind of, the rooms by nature of the existing columns, there's, the rooms kind of divided in two. One, the smaller section of the room being more of, there's a kitchenette over there, there's some laundry services over there, and then small breakout space. And on the other side of the room, it's more of a classroom setting and a large flexible space for gathering of, you know, potentially multiple classes in there. These images here, there's some different renderings of the same potential room, just looking at where we could place some color in the rooms. And this is depicting the interchangeable UPK and kindergarten classrooms. Some of the key elements in here, and they're a little small, because they're on the backside. We talked with great detail at the building, we still have to have some additional follow-up conversations with them, but from UPK to two, we're talking about putting cubbies inside each one of the rooms. So, each child will have their own place to hang their coat. Above them, storage was a big concern with your staff at this building. Storage is a bad word, but what we could do is build into those cubbies millwork above them, that'll be additional storage space.
Is there an elevator that goes all the way to the top floor now?
No, that elevator.
I know it's not, I mean, in the new plan, is what I meant to say.
No, we, that elevator, I went to the manufacturer, we called out and asked, there's no way to extend it. The only way to, the only way to do it is to tear that whole elevator out, build a new pit, come back and build a brand-new elevator.
So, so we will not have people accessing the third floor?
There's two classrooms and three, I apologize if I'm wrong, there's three offices up there also. They're interchangeable, it's only one classroom, sorry. One, one classroom and then the boiler room, so sorry, one classroom up there. It is an interchangeable classroom, because it's not ADA accessible. So, that and the couple of offices adjacent to it, you'd have to walk up that flight of stairs.
Will it be approved by SED?
It's a pre.
With this waiver or exception or something?
You do not have to have every space ADA, you cannot put a special up there that can't be reproduced somewhere else. So, by, by being an interchangeable classroom, that classroom, should there be an issue where somebody needs to be, needs ADA accessibility, we would have to transfer or move them to a different room. But not all rooms and not all facilities have to meet it, as long as the experiences equal other places.
Okay.
I'm gonna turn this over to Alastair.
So, yes, these are the projects, the top one is currently out to bid, and I'll talk a little bit about the second one, which is really just a bullet point, which is the second part of the kitchen upgrade work. That's still in at SED, waiting for review, but we anticipate being able to go out to bid beginning of the summer. First one up is the concession stand, which is the kind of the second phase, I should say, of the Mount Pleasant track and field work. We, we worked with Terry and his team to be able to award the track, the field, the grandstand, the press box, the lights, parking lot, extended parking lot with the proper-sized spaces for cars, which would be good. That is underway, and we're, we're kind of like, we're really, we're on schedule to have that completed by the end of the summer. The concession stand building, now that we've been able to secure funding, is out to bid with bids opening on Tuesday. This will also actually incorporate a reworking of the Blue Oding entrance, where we create a secure vestibule, in the hope that further work within that space where it gets developed will become the kind of CSE space, CSE space. But we're providing the vestibule as part of the capital project. We're anticipating, we've had a good. Um, we're, we're anticipating, um, we've had a good interest from bidders. Um, so we're anticipating a, a good bid opening down at, uh, the Family and Community Engagement Center, uh, on, on Tuesday at four, so.
The idea with this is, uh, it's completed prior to Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That is the intent. Sure, so this is a kind of a cutaway exonometric view, where it's if you're standing above the, the, the main field. There's a little building on the left, which is actually like an eight-by-eight square building that's gonna be used for a ticket booth. Um, there's a main kind of gate entrance between the, the two buildings. We're forming a kind of, a, a grand entrance onto the, onto the, the plaza that would serve the multi-purpose field. Um, we have male and female toilets. Um, and then in between of those, we have a gender-neutral bathroom, family room, uh, janitor's closet. And then the kind of angled wall you see in the far right, that is your concession stand area that will have two points of sale windows and, uh, a transaction window for where people can get their, their food. Uh, these are a couple of the kind of the renderings that we've generated. Um, we're looking at obviously in, um, putting branding on this building because it's one of the showcase entrances to your brand-new field. Um, so we're, we're kind of, as I say, we're excited to, to get this out the ground and, uh, have it done by the end of the year. Um, I had a kickoff meeting today with, uh, Brian and the contractors for Yates Elementary School, uh, kitchen and cafeti- or kitchen and cafeteria upgrades. Um, it's, that's a two-phase project where we're working on the, the new kind of custodian suite first in order to, um, be able to relocate the custodian, because we're gonna be taking over that space as part of the, the enlarged warming kitchen. This view here shows the, the blue for the cafeteria, which will be having some aesthetic upgrades within there, adding some acoustic treatments to the walls. And the red area indicates the, the kind of major part of the renovation to the, the warming kitchen, cooler, and, uh, dishwashing area, as well as a small custodian, uh, closet. And that work, as I say, we're scheduled to begin demolition. If everything moves along as it should, we're doing some demolition work during the, the spring break. Um, and then the majority of the work will all be, um, conducted during the summer, of the summer.
Any questions on those items before? Okay, um, I'm gonna jump ahead, then the, uh, the last item before we turn things over to Brian is just your, every presentation we're bringing back from our, our team members, day automation, they're championing the security with, uh, Jeff? Over there. Thank you, Jeff, just making sure. Um, so we, we're gonna continue each presentation to bring the update of what's been completed. So this is just an ongoing report, you're gonna see the growth of, of ongoing and completed as we move through. Uh, the last but very important is because this is the key item, uh, without the efforts and, and work that's been done by Brian and his team, and I'm gonna let him talk to these. But, you know, we've been dubbing them the District Make-Ready Projects, uh, which are, you know, finishes and, and getting your buildings ready, not just at Fulton, other places, but we're gonna turn it over, and Brian, please.
Sure. Just real quick, I just wanted to cover, uh, some of the work that our Facilities Department is doing, some of our in-house projects. Fulton, to be specific. Um, we, our goal is to make Fulton a place that is desirable and kids wanna go. Um, we walked into Fulton when I first arrived here, it was a storage building that was, you know, um, needed quite a bit of work. Um, a lot of it cosmetic, some of it, um, was also the systems. Since then, we've replaced a boiler, had a boiler replacement, replacement project completed. We've gone through the HVAC system, we've gone through the roofing system, we're currently have our, uh, staff on-site. Um, the, this is a classroom, any of the hardwood floors have been sanded down, refinished. Um, they've all been repainted, I think they may even have a mock-up classroom set up at this point for staff to stop in and see. Um, we have the gym, um, if you can flip the, actually, I'll go through some of the, I apologize. Assisting security and IT, working, uh, updating the security systems, um, refinishing the trazo floors, that's all done in-house with our masons. Um, classrooms, obviously, I've went over that, the MEP, that's mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems, we've made improvements to. As you can see, um, the gym is also, uh, if we can flip through, I'm done with, with that list, I apologize. Kind of stumbling on my words here, this was what the gym looked like when we cleared it out. I'm not sure it's ever been cut and refinished before. So our intent was to make the Fulton Gym look like a mini-high school. And we want, we want the kids to really be proud about coming in there. Um, it was, you know, it was rough. So, uh, that was actually bid out, we used a vendor that, um, has done floors at Notre Dame, he's done floors at West Point. Um, he really is some of the, uh, one of the best floor refinishers that I've ever, ever worked with. We stained the keys, uh, we just want the kids to feel like it is a place to, to come and be proud of, even though they're being shifted. We want staff and kids to feel good. Um, we're redoing the stage, the doors on the stage, were built in our shop. I don't have any pictures of that, but they are painted and coated, uh, the same colors that the, uh, the district uses, uh, dark blue.
Just to give them credit, that photograph of the existing gym, that looks good compared to some of the classrooms that they've turned into, looking brand-new, so, great, great work.
The, uh, how many classrooms are in Fulton, I, there's four?
There's more than that, twelve, isn't it, twelve or fourteen? Fifteen? We have an exact count.
And is there an elevator there to the second floor? There's no elevator there either, right, that's what I thought, okay.
That building is, it, that is, we're gonna refer to that as a pre-existing non-conforming building. The state has accepted that as swing space before. There are a number, we do have a few classrooms on the, on the lower level-
Right.
That we could use-
That maybe was the four number that I had heard, but, yeah, okay.
So we're limited, if there was a challenge with disabilities, we would either have to find a different place or relocate them to those lower levels.
I just wanna add that, the, having Fulton is a tremendous, tremendous advantage to be able to do these construction projects. I, that's my background, I come out of the building industry and we used to call it the ten-week miracle, trying to get the work done over the summer. There are many, many shortcuts that are taken over the summer projects. And then we come back and try to finish them at nights, weekends, holidays. It's, it's extremely challenging. One of the reasons we have so many people interested in our projects is because of this. Because they can keep people busy, we can go in for sixteen months for twelve months and work on, uh, work on our schools. It is a huge advantage, I, I can't say that enough, it really is. Also additionally, just one last thing that I forgot to mention, the parking lot is also going to be sealed and repainted and restriped. Um, you know, just some of the things as they pull in, they will see, um, huge improvements. And that was it for us.
The playground and the area out back has been, it's a miracle, it's miraculous.
At Fulton? Oh, okay.
Good, need a, need a tour up there.
Again, as always, thank you very much. Uh, we're here at whatever time you need us and, and questions, so please feel free to ask. If you don't have them tonight, they can all, Dr. Kodo is always available, we'll reach out to him and we'd be glad to share them with you. Uh, we're gonna continue to do this update, we're also going to be putting together, uh, pull-up banners for, uh, for use at the building.
Okay.
But also here at the board meeting, that are similar to the ones that we had during the referendum, while it'd be project-specific. And then we can keep sharing that information out of this, as things advance.
I know you said thirty-seven million would be spent in the next fourteen months after the next eight months or something like. So how much is the estimate approximately of Van Corleir that we're looking at here? And then the other one, um, was, uh, S, uh, Steinmetz? What are the ballpark numbers on those two projects?
Well, the, the maximum-
Yep.
Cost allowance for SED is, I'm not gonna have Van Corleir, and slightly over twenty-nine and a half, Steinmetz.
Okay, so we can have-
It's just a hard cost.
So we, so we know what we're looking at when the estimates come in of how close we'll be.
We'll, we'll be bringing all that data to the, uh, using the good estimates to try to protect it so we can, we can see how it comes out of the gate.
Okay, thank you.
The good news is, as we've said, in five years, whatever you didn't get now, it can be first on the list when the five years come to come. So it isn't lost per se, it just may have been settled away on some of the way. We'll pick on freshman leadership, the projected scope of the diversity of that building, based on BCS needs and our program improvements, was roughly sixty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that didn't include some of the additional program changes that were desired in that building. So you just can't tackle that larger job based on the state funding mechanism. So it's planned so that we work on the areas we can without impacting, you know, to our best guesses in, in planning, so that we can get these areas and then in the, you know, in the future referendums that we will do in the future, we'd be coming back to, is this project starting and talking about those needs? And how does that master plan play out? And that's the same for each one of our buildings. Uh, you can see Van Corleir is not getting as aggressively worked on as we would like, but based on the mechanisms of funding, your elementary buildings are aided less than you're gonna get in the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you didn't, you don't have as big of a chunk to grab from. So you take that scope, plan it out, and then, you know, five years later, or whenever that next project can be pointed at that building, we'd come back and do additional work.
I guess that's essentially what we're doing here, because we left some, we didn't have enough money in, for Van Corleir the last time, so.
It's every, unfortunately, that's just an inch of building.
So we thank you very much for the update and all the work that you have been doing on our buildings, we appreciate it. Okay, thank you so much, thank you.
Love when y'all come in. Um, a quick, a quick statement for us, Bernie says, not for y'all, y'all can go sit down, leave, whatever. We've been through this before and the toll it puts on our children to transition to a building and then transition to another building. And, and while it's necessary, I just want us to always be mindful about what does that transition plan look like for our babies? Especially those who have transitioning issues. We have children with differing abilities, IEPs, 504 plans, that are going to need even more support than they get right now because a change to a new building is hard for anyone, it is harder for that population of students. So I just want us to say it out loud that we've gotta be mindful of that. Spaces look great, they do, I love the renderings, uh, but our, our babies are gonna need that support.
I think the credit to having Fulton is that if we were, you know, and Tom spoke to this and Brian spoke to this, is that if you didn't have that space, we would be forced to shift students multiple times throughout the year to try to accommodate this in coordinate sections of the building. Or do it in small chunks over breaks in the summer, which in the summer we did roughly forty days. Then we can build over in the summer break. So, you know, that, that is, and additionally, we've been meeting with, um, the administrative team that's been holding meetings with the staff and talking about parent meetings and things like that on these transitions. So it's lots of different things that we're working on.
And I would also say just being mindful and working with Student Support Services and just all of our departments and making sure that even as we make these shifts, that we're mindful around the impact.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica and Dr. Kodo, and thank you, Tom. Okay, so we will continue with our last presentation by CFO Terry Gululi. And he will be presenting on the budget.
You, Brian?
Or Richard.
Yeah, if you could stay around for a couple hours would be good, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard, Alistair and Tom, thank you. And Matt, have a good evening.
They're sticking around.
Take care, have a good night. Oh, and actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Gululi, before you begin-
Yep.
Student Board Member Joyce, you're excused from the rest of the board meeting. Thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
But this is the riveting part.
All right, thank you. Again, we've been meeting, last few meetings, uh, talked about the enrollment, talked about the FTEs. Uh, we just had staffing meetings at the buildings, um, I'm sorry, at Five-Thirty Liberty, where we had everybody that we talked about our process, had every individual principal come into, uh, the team to speak about their needs and, uh, what's needed at each building. We reviewed those with SSS, Student Support Services, Special Education, um, Teaching and Learning, Security, Maintenance. So that was just done this week, so I don't have a lot of updates. Um, I just wanted to make sure that through this process, um, being aware that, you know, it takes time to develop the budget. Eddata orders went out to all the teachers, so they're able to order their stuff in the deadline. But the next meeting will have more detail of the line items, by-line items. But the items that we do and aware of tonight, I wanna just let you know and, uh, discuss that a little bit. Um, you know, no new developments with New York State budget, um, the stu- the still process of hold everybody harmless. Um, it's still negotiating and we don't see like our original three-hundred thousand, four-hundred thousand dollars, I believe it was, that we are getting less than if they actually funded the whole formula. But we're moving forward with what the governor proposed in our budget. Um, again, district recommendation, no tax increase plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five. And I have a couple slides that relates to that to show at the last meeting where that is in comparison. It's kind of hard to compare apples to apples, but I did my, uh, best in regards to just the fair value. And then, um, maintains all of our, again, programs and staffing levels that we currently have in the district. And after these staffing meetings, looking to add some additional, um, staff that maybe needed throughout the buildings. Um, first I want to just review fund balance because, um, you know, with our savings and how we develop for future budgets and how we can prepare if there ever is something that may, you know, potentially be that fiscal cliff that people think may be coming in the next couple of years. But we have currently, um, non-expendable twenty-seven thousand, that's just something we prepaid. And these are as of the year-end twenty-twenty-three in comparison to twenty-twenty-two. You see the difference of about seven million dollars, um, the major ones being the capital reserve and the repair reserve. And I apologize, I believe your document, our board document might be-
Our documents is pretty bad.
Yeah.
I didn't know what mine got there.
It was fine this afternoon, but something, I don't know what happened, they converted, but it's fine on the screen.
I was wondering if we could get copies with the proper columns here.
Yeah, so it's up there and we will get you the correct columns. Um, so basically, um, the biggest change and differences are the capital reserves, the three-hundred million. As you know, when we voted on that, of the three-hundred million, two ninety-four was coming from, um, borrowing and then six million dollars from our, um, capital reserve, um, reserves that we had already built into the budget. And then repair reserve, um, with the items that are going, that are not part of the capital project, like the Mount Pleasant Field, Sanctity Field, the boiler that they mentioned previously, uh, Page Elementary, work that had to be done there, that's being done with the repair reserves that may not qualify for a capital, um, money reimbursement. Um, and then we have assigned, uh, basically our commerces and subsequent years' expenses. And that was, um, it's to ten-million-dollar jump last year, as you remember, when we closed out last year, we purchased, you know, Kane Elementary, Liberty Street, we've been through all these numbers previously. So with our savings, we are able to subsequent to current-year budget, any expenses we have, um, to fill that budget gap. Um, unassigned at ten million, I believe this was the first time in a long time that the district was able to get our unrestricted, um, unassigned fund balance up to the four percent that is allowed by New York State regulations. So, um, in the previous years, it's been about two-point-three, two-point-five. Again, the state is advocating for maybe increasing that, um, from four percent because four percent is only ten million dollars on a, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-million-dollar budget.
I was gonna say you must be.
Yep, sorry about that.
I'm not seeing the ten million.
So total fund balance as a total percentage of our budget is eighteen-point-eight-two percent right now. We would like to, at the end of this year, with money that we have available from savings, is go back to here and fund some of these reserve funds for future years' use when we determine necessary. Uh, we don't really have high levels right now. Um, we were within the guidelines or, I guess, the regulations when the State Office of State Controllers came in and they did not identify that we had any excess funds into the, um, reserves. So we really wanna keep it at the four percent moving forward and fund the necessary reserves as we determine necessary, as we go through the budget process. The tax levy, again, we are going out at zero. If we were to raise our taxes, we are able to go out at three-point-two-four percent, which would generate approximately one-point-six million dollars of additional revenue. But determining that we have enough money with the- But determining that we have enough money with the still ARP funds, the additional foundation aid and the savings from the current year and prior years, we able to sustain that zero tax for the, um, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then the budget development, um, the tax rate. This is what I was saying is kind of difficult. I, um, went on, um, New York State Open Book, which shows the tax rate for area school districts that are, um, partial in Schenectady County. And the way you do this is, um, is just the full value of the tax rate per one thousand. That's the way you could compare it apples to apples. That is not what our tax rate is based off. Your tax rate is actually based off the assessed value of the tax rate. Um, assessed value is basically the dollar value assigned to a home or other piece of real estate for property tax purposes. It takes into the account the value of comparable properties in the area and that little brief description down there in the bottom. So basically, and like Kathy asked, we were usually higher than other areas surrounding districts in the past. But our tax rate, if every district did the tax rate based on the full value of the property, we would be in a line, if not less than a lot of other Schenectady County, um, school districts.
Do we know what the assessed value of the other districts is?
I did not go and get all that. Um, it wasn't readily available. I did reach out to the other districts to just let them know that I am doing this comparison in case the question comes up for them. But I know our assessed value tax rate for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is twenty dollars and forty-two cents per thousand property and twenty-twenty-one for those ones that are in Rotterdam. You have a question?
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask board members if we can wait until the very end to ask questions.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So again, taxable full value is, uh, three billion dollars, but our assessed value is like two point seven, I believe it is. So that's why the tax rate per thousand is more than the assessed value, but in comparison to other area schools, uh, we are within those or lower. And that's the hard apple to apples with the, um, basis of the properties. And then transportation, we touched a little bit on this. I just want to bring it to our attention because we really should start looking into this in more detail as we move forward because it is a large expenditure for the district, um, even though we do get state aid on the reimbursement part of it. But basically, New York State guidelines, as a city school, we're not required to provide transportation for our students except for those pupils with disabilities. Um, previous years, many years ago, like the guidelines for New York State is K through eight, if you live within two miles of the school, you don't get transportation. And nine through twelve, if you live more than three miles in the school, you get transportation. Um, up to a distance of fifteen miles. Obviously, in our city school districts, the different demographics, we're not required. However, our budget, our, um, taxpayers voted a while ago that we will provide transportation for any student in the elementary grades over one mile and any student in middle school and high school over one point five miles. So those are not requirements, but it's something that the district passed a while ago. The reason why I'm bringing this up, um, you can see on the bottom, even though we're not required to provide transportation, um, we have to do it, um, for the special education students, but the state will give you aid on transportation of pupils who live more than one and one-half miles from the school. So currently, we are in our elementary school as our policy states here. Um, that's just the special education. This is our actual policy number five seven two zero. Um, any student that resides one mile but less than five point five miles, oops, sorry, wrong button. All right. One miles to one point five miles, five point five miles, we are providing that transportation for our students. And then grade six through twelve, any students one point five miles to five point miles, we're providing that transportation. Why am I bringing this up? Um, currently, we are not receiving state aid on those students that we transport from one mile to one point five miles. And that's approximately six hundred and thirty-three students throughout our elementary schools. I don't want to make it, you know, this is a fiscal, I understand why we are doing it, um, but just to bring it to your attention so you're aware, um, as we look going forward to cost of transportation and as those costs keep on rising, we are not receiving money back for those services. And we're not required to do it. And we also provide transportation for students who may attend programs outside of the district that are our students, such as a CTE program at BOSI's or Tech Valley, that we are required by opening up those transportation. We are now then required to do it for other non-public schools where students who live in Schenectady but attend outside districts, such as like an Albany Academy, um, CBA or Charter School in Albany. Since we do it for our own students, we have to provide that service for the other students. And that's approximately like five, six hundred students that we send to Albany just based on what we currently do within district. And we do receive aid on that. But I just want to let you know that that's, um, something that is coming up more and more. So just the budget of our transportation and what it looks like. We have four people currently FTEs. As you know, we contract all our transportation out currently. Um, for twenty million dollars, twenty point nine million for the budget for next year, um, CDTA, we're currently still in negotiations to have them do more of those, uh, students. So you get funded as transportation is a expense-driven aid. So as you can see, our transportation percentage is ninety percent. Where last year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the budget was seventeen point nine. Um, we were right about that, maybe a little bit higher, but we're getting only twelve point one million in aid this year due to those, what they call non-allowable pupil decimals that if you transport within, outside the guidelines or without what was passed by the board, you don't get the aid on that. So we're getting a little less aid than we possibly could if we did, or if our expenses were a little bit less. And then, um, benefits and debt payments, um, I believe Kathy asked last, uh, meeting, our employee retirement systems, uh, went up thirteen point one to fifteen point two zero. Uh, basically, that's the contribution that the employer is required to pay, um, for the retirement system for all your employees who are in their, um, retirement system. And then the teacher's retirement system, we paid ten dot, ten point zero two percent up from nine point seven six. Our total employee benefits is forty-seven point two million. Projected for that, but if we determine that maybe a little bit more or less, depending on the rates that we're getting back from Highmark, which you approved tonight, that we're gonna continue with them, we will make those necessary adjustments. And then our debt payments, um, again, this has nothing to do with the current project. It's, um, pro, on payments that for prior projects. Obviously, we haven't gone out and borrowed any money yet. For this current project, we're still using our fund balance. So the increase is due partially because we had excess money last year in our debt service fund that we used to pay down, um, some of our debt. And this year is back up to seventeen million, but we are getting projected aid of fourteen point eight million based on our building aid ratio. Moving forward, um, you know, the final twenty-four, twenty-five budget at the next meeting, and then we adopt it later, um, in April, at our last meeting in April. Um, at the April tenth meeting, I'll have more information line by line where departments, as we go through all the staffing that we just met on and any additional expenses. We did send out, I just wanted to give you a heads up, um, we're sending out an email to all teachers within the district to provide them the opportunity to select equipment or furniture for their classrooms. Um, in the prior years, we had that wish list. Now, you know, to get our classrooms more uniform and look, no matter what building you walk into, should have the same type of furniture. So we provide, we're gonna provide them with an option of like three choices or four choices of a bookshelf. And then three or four choices of a rug for your elementary classrooms and three or four choices of a table, kidney table, and even like three or four choices for a chair. So based on the popular opinion of everybody who completes the survey, we will get something that's either comparable where that exact item, once we go out and bid or get the state contract. So that is furniture that we're looking to equip throughout the district and each of the buildings. Um, we have the funding for that either through our ARP funds, savings this year, we'll, we'll budget the remaining in our twenty-four, twenty-five, which I have part of that, I already budgeted. All right. And then we have to do our final BOSI's service commitment, which should not much changes to that, but that's due, um, by April. And then, um, the final budget staffing sheets. Any questions?
Board Member Kathy?
Back on slide twelve, I think, um, twelve.
Related to what?
Transportation, transportation. Column twenty-three, twenty-four, I don't believe adds up correctly. So does that projected transportation state aid relate to the seventeen-nine fifty? Or does it relate to?
It's just a contract contractual I put in there. I didn't add up all of the other columns. That should be just, um, no, I have to look at that. I'm sorry.
No, I was looking at the difference between the two and I've got, I've got a four million dollar difference, but I'm twenty-three million.
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't know what happened to the slide.
Okay, but, uh, but my point is, is, does the projected transportation state aid work off that twenty-three, twenty-four number? Or twenty-four, twenty-five, right?
The twenty-three, twenty-four, the twenty-four, twenty-five, that, that budget amount is what we're budgeting, but the amount that we receive in twenty-three, twenty-four is for the prior year. So you always get the state aid the year after, based on your ST three actual, it's not based on budget. It's based on your actual, so there may be fluctuations throughout the school year based on your actual submission at the end of the school year. So it's not based on the total budget. So it won't be, our state aid will not be based on our budget this year where our budget last year, our state aid is what our actual expenses were for last year.
Expenses turn out to be for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yep, yep.
And how are we running? I mean, uh?
It were in line with what we projected. And you do have the opportunity to go back in up to like, I think it's February when they finalize their database for the budget. If your expenditures were a lot different, but we file our year end twenty-three by September of twenty-three to get it projected for state aid for twenty-four, twenty-five.
So also related to that slide, the contract transportation, the, the, uh, three million dollar increase there. What is that reflecting on the part of the people we're contracting from? I mean, is it primarily higher gas, uh?
Higher gas, more usage. Um, we have more special A, um, special ed students that are utilizing it, uh, more out of district placements, maybe. Um, our door-to-door transportation.
It has nothing to do with electric buses yet or anything like that.
None of that has to do with that. Um, they have not projected any cost onto us yet. We have applied for those, as we mentioned at the last meeting, but we have not received any of those funds yet. But, you know, it's kind of on hold now too with legislation. So, no, that's just our actual cost um, and what we're budgeting with the increases and the utilization of more routes.
And I just want to see this. And do any board members to my left have any questions? Okay. Board Member Jamaica?
I'm just gonna say the same thing I said last time. Um, we know the costs are going up on transportation and the city of Schenectady brags about its relationship with us and how much they love partnering with us. And one of the reasons that we have such a transportation cost is because we don't have walkable communities, right? And for a number of reasons, including sidewalks, snow removal, there's a lot of pieces why our children can't, like physically, cannot walk to our schools. Um, and so I look forward to hearing from the mayor and the city council uh, about how we can partner together to ensure that we have walkable communities for our students, which in turn are walkable communities for the communities themselves. Um, and what are those other community partnerships, right? Because we have had a, a wealth of, you know, commitments from individuals saying, I want to partner with you. What does that look like on the transportation side? Um, because this does also dovetail with our attendance issues. And we've done such a great job with building relationships with parents and being like, hey, you know, why isn't Jeffrey at school today? Not Carlos, Carlos came to school today. But why isn't, why isn't Jeffrey at school today? Is everything okay? Does he need a ride? Are there other partnerships around transportation that we can leverage that would help us in that regard as well?
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. And I did want to mention that one slide, I think is before this one, the one that you talk about the mileage. Thank you for sharing that because we've gotten, we've gotten a lot of emails in regards to the mileage and the transportation. So I think this is really helpful and even the one before that, um, before the policy, yes.
State regulations, yeah. Those are the state regulations.
Thank you. Thank you. If we have any other questions, we'll submit them to you. Okay?
Oh, thanks. So, good evening again. Um, I appreciate your indulgence tonight. Um, this was a last minute add to the presentations, but, um, the reason for that is that we're trying to orchestrate this whole symphony where we're trying to leverage funds from Smart Schools Bond Act, E-Rate, to help buy down some of the work that we're doing in some of the buildings like, um, Steinmetz, um, and, um, Van Corleere so that the maximum cost allowance, that money goes further because we're using funds to do part of that work. So, um, and it's, anytime you gotta submit something to state ed, it takes time. So, um, our Smart Schools Bond Act proposal will have to be submitted to state ed. Um, they are definitely quicker than they were when I did my last one at another school district, but we're talking many months to get approval. So just a little background here, um, Smart Schools Bond Act, um, basically, the, the governor, um, put out a referendum um, and the voters approved, um, spending up to two billion dollars. Uh, it allows the, the, um, the state to, um, sell bonds to an amount of about two billion dollars for the state of New York. Each school district, based upon their state aid ratio, was allocated a certain amount of money. In our case, uh, we were allocated about, uh, nine point three million dollars. Um, and we've done a couple of projects and I'll, I'll talk about where we're at with those funds, uh, coming up. But just for some background, some of the things that you can use this money for. Classroom connectivity, um, cabling within the buildings, uh, network infrastructure, uh, switches, wireless access points, those types of things. Uh, classroom technology, things like mobile devices, interactive whiteboards, um, those types of things within, um, a classroom. Community connections, internet, if you had to build out internet connectivity, fortunately, uh, we're in really good shape there. Pre-K classrooms, uh, can be, um, can be built for schools that, uh, were going to implement that. And then eliminating temporary buildings was another option, and then security and safety. So you'll note that the, uh, the first two, the classroom connectivity and, um, classroom technology, and then the last one, school security and safety, those are bold-faced. Those are the ones that we're focusing on with the remainder of our funds. So before I talk about what the plan is, just a little bit about the reasoning behind this. These are bonds that are being sold. I, I believe they're like fifteen-year bonds. So when I think about where we should spend these things, we really need to focus on infrastructure. Because if we're spending them, spending this money on Chromebooks or something like that, they're gonna be a landfill long before this debt is, um, paid off. Um, and I guess I should back up a little bit and say that the money, there's no cost to the district for these projects. Um, this is money that's coming directly from the state. There's no reimbursement, or we don't have to reimburse them or pay any debt back. But in any event, um, we're really looking to focus on things that are gonna last a long time. And those things are like cabling within our buildings, infrastructure-type things, um, security, safety, um, elements. And I'll get into some of the details there, but as I mentioned earlier, we're really trying to focus, we're trying to leverage multiple funding sources. Uh, we get federal funds through E-Rate. We're using that as part of this because we can do some cabling and we can buy equipment with that. Um, but we're part, we're using that money in conjunction with Smart Schools. Um, and again, I'm trying to help the construction guys out by alleviating some of their maximum cost allowance on their projects. So where have we been? So before I got here, um, the district applied, or they, they put in two applications, uh, one for connectivity for about one point nine million dollars and classroom technology, which was three point, almost three point seven million dollars. From those, um, projects, the district ended up, I'm gonna say expensing or expense, um, funds to the total of about a hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty. There was actually more than that, but some of that was paid with other funds because we got a lot of money during COVID. Um, and then in the classroom technology, uh, we, we, uh, applied for about three point seven. Um, there's about, uh, two point five million that's been expensed. I put a little, um, asterix there because I'm reserving about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from that previous application to use going forward. But the bottom line is, after those first two projects, we have about six point two million dollars left. So that's what we intend to focus, uh, the next projects on. So, um, the proposal is to take about four point five million dollars of that six point two. So the proposal is to take about $4.5 million of that 6.2. None of our buildings have any generator backup power. That means when we lose power, we've got nothing. Our phone systems are now on our network, those phones don't work. All of our, you know, freezers, refrigerators, all those things, our life, life safety systems, a lot of them have some battery backup, but that doesn't last very long. So focus here is to put in generator backup power in each of the buildings, and then once you put those in, you identify what circuits you're gonna power up with the generators so that we can sustain things like our network, security systems, freezers, refrigerators, life, life safety systems through a power outage. And I can tell you that it's a, it's very uncomfortable not having any power or generator pack, backup here in this building because this is where our data center is. And when that goes down, things don't always come up the way they should be, but I'm really looking forward to getting this implemented. Another area that we're looking to focus is on security with our PA systems. We have several buildings that have very antiquated PA systems. They, we, we've got different ones in different buildings. What we're looking to do is to standardize and bring those up as we do buildings. That's, it's gonna be a combination of what we call IP speakers as well as analog systems, but we're looking to reserve about $720,000 for that project. And what we'll do is we'll just, we'll carry that on as far as we can across however many buildings we can bring up along the way. And then cabling, reserving about a million dollars for updating the cabling. The first project that we did had connectivity in it, and basically, we replaced all of our switches and all of our wireless access points. We got those all in place and we're finding, and we should have known this, but a lot of the cabling that was used, especially for the wireless access points, is not adequate to carry the, the amperage that they need to power the wireless access points. So in some cases, they're very unreliable in certain spaces. So the intent here is we're gonna take a look at our, our fiber network, our fiber cabling throughout all of our buildings. We will, we want to bring it all up to what's called single-mode fiber, test what's there, if it needs to be re-terminated, cleaned, or replaced, we'll do that. And anything that's not single-mode, we'll replace it with single-mode fiber so that we'll have that infrastructure throughout all of our buildings. The other thing that we're gonna do is make sure that every classroom has CAT 6A cabling to the wireless access points. Any of the new security cameras that are going in require 6A as well. That's the one that allows the higher amperage for powering those devices. And then also putting in cabling to each office in each classroom, the new phones use the, the CAT 6 as well. So that's the, that's really the focus for those. The public address systems, I'm really, some of the enhancements that we're gonna be able to do there with the new IP speakers is we'll have marquees that'll be able to show that we're in a lockdown or a lockout, whatever the case may be. They've got strobes on them, so some of those things that we're missing in the buildings right now. So as far as the process is concerned, we, you now have the opportunity to basically tell me it's okay to move forward. This presentation has been posted on the website, I posted it today. There's a 30-day comment period where people can ask questions, make comments. We'll come back to this in a month at the board meeting. And if the, if, at that point, I'll, you'll be asked to approve the plan, and then we will go ahead and submit to state ed for approval. So we're, this is not a live email address right now, I just built it earlier today, but probably by Friday, I'll make sure that it's all set up. So community members that have any questions, board members, anybody has any questions, you can email this email address, ssbaforsmartschoolsbondact@schenecteyschools.org, and we can respond to those questions through that email address. Any questions?
We thank you, we're gonna use the email address and we'll submit questions to you.
When the original submission of the Smart School Bond about the other sources of funding, that's when COVID hit. So we used the CARES Act money because we wanted to make sure we got the, the items in the people's hands right away, the students' hands. So that's why they didn't spend the money from the Smart School Bonds. Yep. Yep.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome. We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members. Hearing none. An executive session is now called for the purpose of discussing matters regarding proposed, pending, or current insurance litigation, a suspension appeal, and the medical financial credit of an, or employment history of a particular employee leading to appointment. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP, second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, board member Erica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries to go into executive session. Have a great evening, everyone.